Good afternoon. My special Apple Watch and my iPhone say it is 6 o'clock. So I will call the January 27 meeting of the Bassdrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Cheryl Lee. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Pablo Serna.
Here.
And Matt Lasson, Carrie Kaler, and Scott Long won't be attending.
Okay. We do have a quorum. Item number two, citizen comments. At this time, we can, if there's anyone who wishes to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda, you'll have just a couple minutes to fill out a request form. That's, again, anything that is not on the agenda. Okay, do we have any requests for citizen comments, Nicole?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we will skip on to item number three. With item for individual consideration at 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the December 16 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. If everyone had a chance to read them.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Please record me as abstaining because I was not here. Other than that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Item 3B, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval for an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from rural residential to industry for Bassdrop Colorado Bend LLP for 312.591 plus or minus acres of land out of the A2 Stephen F. Austin to the west of Lover's Lane located within the city of Bassdrop, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and forward to the recommendation to the city council. Ms. Jennifer? I'm sorry?
She would like that thing on the record.
Okay. Tell us what it's all about.
Good evening. So the first item on our agenda tonight is to consider a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use map that's part of the Comprehensive Plan. What we're looking at is the 312.591 acres that is currently being requested to be annexed into the city limits and a new zoning applied to that property. So just to go back, back in time, back to June of last year, that's when y'all heard this, about this project first. You saw this concept plan, and then it went to city council to two meetings for their approval for a development agreement. So this area is currently in what's called the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So it's a one-mile planning buffer around the city limits that we have subdivision authority in, but we do not have land use control. So we, there are state law requirements that we can control subdivision in certain circumstances. That's when you have the extension of roads, make sure the utilities are there. In this case, they wanted to connect the city utilities. The city council signed a development agreement with the developer that we would extend utilities, and in exchange, they're going to pay to do, to extend those utilities. But for access to our utilities, they're going to annex into the city limits. So with that also comes our authority to do zoning, to do building permits, to do site plans, to look at all of those different stages of the project. Where before, we would have just looked at subdivision. They could have done whatever uses they wanted there and just gone to the county and got permits. So what we're talking about tonight is 312 and change acres. That's kind of the phase one of this project. So you'll see here is the top part of that previous area, north of Margie's Way and west of Lover's Lane. So obviously, it's also south of the Colorado River. The closest the city limits is, is to the north. That's Pecan Park subdivision. So this first request that we have before you tonight is to amend the future land use plan. Currently, this area is rural residential for this area, and they're requesting to change that to industry. So you can see here of the colors on our map, rural residential is kind of towards the top. It's a base kind of area for anything that was in the ETJ fringe that, due to lack of accessibility utilities and roads, was meant to be kind of just really large lot residential or ranchland. Given the changing market and the conditions with utilities in this area, they're requesting to change to industry, which allows, under our future land use plan, a mix of development types and mix of uses in that future land use plan, and allows them to ask for the zoning of place-type employment center, which is, we'll get into later on why, that's the appropriate zoning district for what their intended use is. So they're requesting to rezone, or rezone, sorry. We're requesting that you only change tonight the future land use on that 312 acres, since that's what's currently being annexed into the city limits and what's going to be developed first, and leave the southern half. Bring that forward when they bring that annexation petition in and when they bring that new zoning request in for the lower part of the property. Comprehensive plans are regulated under Chapter 213 of the Texas Local Government Code. There's a process for developing a plan and then doing amendments to the plan on an as-needed basis. That's what we're doing right now. Those plan amendments can be made after public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council and to readings of an ordinance. There was also, like I said, a development agreement for this property was approved on January, January, June 22nd, 2021. The public comments, we sent notices to 61 owners within the 200-foot area of the 546 acres. As of noon today, we had two responses received, one with no objection and one opposed. The next steps for this specific item is to go to February 22 meeting of city council for the public hearing and first reading there. And then after that, the second reading will be done at the March 8 city council meeting, where the actual amendment would be approved. Our recommendation is to recommend approval to city council, and that's another thing, planning and zoning on these items is a recommending body. So your, what you guys will do tonight is make a recommendation to city council. Tonight, you're not approving anything. You're making that recommendation for council to consider for their approval or denial. Any questions of staff?
Jennifer, where in relationship on that map would the proposed content soccer fields be if they do the city and the school approve? I know the city council approved unanimously.
Oh, for the city property that we own down there?
For the, yes.
Yeah, that's that dark green square right there.
Okay.
And it's shown as parks and open space because it's owned by the city.
It's about 25 acres, is that right?
Yeah, 25 acres.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about changing to possibly allow industrial in the future land use code?
Yes.
Oh, what could be an acceptable use under industrial?
Well, so again, the future land use is the guiding document to then assign zoning districts. So under an industry in the future land use plan, industry allows for the rezoning to place-type employment center, which is, and in our previous code, those were, we called those business park and industrial. And those, especially business park is one of those that allows for kind of large campus-like atmospheres. You'll see that's kind of the zoning that you would put like Apple Campus or a Tesla Campus, because you're going to have multiple buildings, multiple uses on site. Usually, the employees go there for the day. They stay there for the whole day, onsite and leave at night. So they usually do their lunch. Everything is done onsite. So that's the same, same idea for this. It's a one, it'll be a single lot, large tract development that'll have all the uses contained onsite. So they'll have movie studios, sound stages, back lots, you know, where you do some filming outside. You do office warehouse, all those different uses. But again, you'll have some cafeterias, you know, food service for the employees because you might have, you know, you'll be there all day, those kind of uses. They'll have some limited accommodations for people who work or are visiting the site for filming, but not, the idea in this phase is not to have, it's not hotels or Airbnbs. It's onsite lodging for the employees. And we'll get into that in more detail in the zoning concept scheme. And the applicants here, if they have any questions.
And I may be jumping ahead here on looking at the, it's, it's pretty much going to be facing inward, right? There's going to be a wall.
Yes, and yeah, we have detail on the zoning concept scheme.
And so there's not a lot of connection between the neighborhood, or surrounding neighborhoods?
No. It's intended to be its own internal campus.
I'll go ahead and ask. So with whatever development that they might build in there, how much of it will they have to bring back to us?
This, after the rezoning, nothing will come back to the, the plats, the plating.
Plats, right.
Yeah, the preliminary final plats will come back to the planning and zoning, sorry.
Okay.
So those, so you'll see the actual plat with, that'll have all the infrastructure and the drainage plan for that subdivision will be at that, the preliminary and the final stages.
When we make a recommendation, whatever we recommend, will go to the city council, who will hear it twice before anything is approved also.
And one of the things I'll also caveat, so right now, we're still what we call the entitlement phase. So this is still the planning phase with the future land use plan, transportation plan, and the zoning. There's still a lot more engineering work that has to be done before we can, they can actually build anything. So this is the first step in the process. Then we have drainage plans, infrastructure plans, site plans, all of those different steps that the owner will have to go through.
With the increase in traffic for industrial, what plans are being made to improve the infrastructure on the roads?
So they, the applicant is currently, they've started a traffic impact analysis. We have our consulting TIA engineer, and y'all will actually hear from one of the members of their firm tonight to talk about TIA's. So that's under review right now, and we're discussing the different mitigations that will have to be done. Most, most of their traffic, most of the traffic impact of this development will be on 71. So it's, it's making sure that there's no bottlenecks as that traffic gets back to Highway 71.
So just for clarification, earlier, this is the totality of the, what we would be approving tonight to rezone to the industrial. I thought that this was only a portion of the land.
This is the, yeah, so this is the entire area. All this yellow is the entire 400, 546 acres. Tonight, we're only talking about 312 acres.
So would they then have to come back for the remainder to us?
Yes, we'll still have to come back for the remainder of the property. You'll have to do another plan amendments and another zoning concept scheme.
So how many, that's what I kind of thought Ishmael was asking. How many, how many more times will they have to come to us to re, before they, we complete the rezoning of the entire property?
They'll have to come back at least one more time to complete the full 546 acres for the rezoning, and they'll come back.
That'll be for the annexation, right?
Yeah, well, the, so annexation.
An annexation comes first.
Annexation comes first. Annexation only goes to council. It doesn't come to P and Z.
Right.
And so the annexation request is going in tandem with all of these requests to city council on the 22nd. So you'll see on the 22nd agenda, you have the annexation request, followed by the future land use plan amendment, the transportation plan amendment, and then the zoning concept scheme. With, with an annexation request, the base zoning that gets assigned is P2 or place type 2, which is a rural residential, is the, and that's for any annexation that happens in town. That's the base and kind of entry level zoning that gets assigned, and then the developer has to come in and do, change to what is there. We don't, in that annexation, just automatically assign what they want. We make them, they have to go through the actual zoning process to have that discussion, so.
Public, anything else?
No, I was going to make a motion to approve.
Well, we have, we're going to have a public hearing first.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Motion to hear public hearing.
Okay. We have a couple of requests to speak. When we call on you, we, we will give everyone three minutes. We ask that you respect that. That has been, I'm looking for my timer right now, that you, you limit your comments to three minutes. And if you see that someone else has already made your point, whether your concern is traffic or noise or roads or whatever, you can stand up and say, I agree with somebody else, so we don't, we can move on during the night. But we want them to stay here until everybody has an opportunity to speak, who has signed up to speak, okay? I'm sorry? I, I called for those before the meeting started. The rules for this council and this body are that the request to speak be filed before the meeting starts. So is there one, anyone here who wants to speak but had, did not sign up? Are you the only one? The only one person? Okay, sir, I will make an exception, only because we want to hear from everybody. But what item do you want to speak on? We're talking about 3B at the moment. No, so we're not going to talk about that right now. If you want to look at the agenda and see which items that we will be considering, then you can, you can sign up to speak. But we're not going to talk about that right now. When your, when your time comes, we can talk about it, okay? Because I'm bending the rules really hard to let you sign up right now. In fact, I hear them cracking, but anyway. They can, they can fire me if they want to. Okay, we have this, we're considering item 3B, and I will open the public hearing at this time. And I do have a request to speak in opposition from Michelle Anderson. Is Michelle here?
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here, but she asked that I read her statement. So I will do that quickly. Unfortunately, I cannot attend this important meeting in person, but wanted to state my opposition to approval of the above referenced agenda item. And she's in opposition to 3B, C, and D. Questions made in, newest drawings published in The Statesman and other media outlets do not align with previous drawings we've been provided. Questions made in person to the city regarding the perimeter road have gone unanswered. The city states this will be a county road, and the county has no knowledge of this. Many details regarding this road need to be addressed and clearly conveyed to the citizenry. The city previously stated its plan to annex a portion of the Colorado River at the southernmost point of the Bassdrop 552 development, where it meets El Camino. The logical assumption is that a future bridge will be constructed here. However, there is a home at the end of El Camino that will surely require removal. Numerous requests have been made to the city for clarification of its future plans requiring annexation of the river, and no reply has been received. Numerous requests for sound surveys have been made, and as with other requests, this request has also gone unanswered. We need to understand the true impact of neighboring residents whenever concerts are held and/or when movies are in production. The landscape is unique, and sound travels very far up the hills and down the river. If the taxpayers are footing the numerous breaks being given to this development, we deserve to benefit from this project. Current plans prohibit public access. We'd like to see that change. The development should host city-county events for the benefit of the public a set number of times throughout the year. I truly appreciate your consideration of my concerns. Thank you very much. This one is for another. This one's down further. This is from Chris and Stephen Kennedy. They have no objection to phase one. So, sir, have you figured out which one you want to talk on? I don't think it's this one. If not, 3C. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. There's no, I have no other people signed up to speak. At this time, I will close the public hearing and consider a recommendation from the commission.
Now I'll make that recommendation to accept the amendment as noted. Recommend approval. City council.
Yes, you're, so you're making a recommendation for approval to city council.
Is there a second? I'll second. Can I do that? I'm chair. I can still vote though, right?
You can vote. I don't know that you can make the motion.
I can second. I can't second.
I don't think you can second.
I second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Let's take a roll call vote.
Pablo Serna?
Aye.
Cheryl Lee?
Aye.
Cynthia Meyer?
No.
Greg Sherry, oh, he's not here. Ishmael Harris, sorry.
No.
Debbie Moore?
Yes. So we will have no recommendations.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the vote was 3 to 2 to recommend our building.
That's right, 3 to 2, that's right.
Yeah, it requires a five, five affirmative votes to make an official recommendation to city council.
Just recommend, just state that the majority of the members present recommended. Okay. All right, we'll go on to item 3C, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval for an amendment to the transportation master plan for the master thoroughfare plan and street grid for Bassdrop Colorado Bend LLP for 546.364 acres of land out of the A2 Stephen F. Austin to the west of Lover's Lane, located within the city of Bassdrop, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and forward the recommendation to the city council. And before you begin, will you tell me for sure that we have one name for this project now?
The name, as I understand, is Bassdrop Colorado Bend.
It's been 552, it's been other things, and I think that adds to confusion by folks. If it's 552, that would be, one name for the, the project would be a good thing, I think. Thank you.
The official name that's under in our files at this point is Bassdrop Colorado Bend.
Okay, okay.
So we, we like consistency of names as well in the planning department. So, so this is another, it's a transportation plan amendment, which is one of our elements of our Comprehensive Plan, and it's for the master thoroughfare plan specifically. So again, we're still talking about the 312 acres at this point. This is what is currently adopted in the existing transportation master plan. As you all remember, back in 2019, when we adopted the B3 codes, one of the things we also did was amended the transportation plan to include a street grid network on top of our thoroughfare plan. So in 2016, we adopted the thoroughfare plan, which had all the major collector roads through the city. Those are the big, bigger roads that are, move traffic. With the B3 code in 2019, we adopted, what you see is these little white roads, which are our local connector street grid. And this is on our 720 grid in our B3 code. This was to really emphasize our commitment to preserving the grid and recreating that, which is what we saw downtown, which provides multiple routes to get, you know, through a property and get to another neighborhood. What the applicant is asking for, since this tract is going to be used as one large user, the whole 546 acres, is to remove those local connector streets and to relocate that blue row that you see. So right now, it's, we have, it's called a primary multimodal street in our code that goes down Lover's. Then it was going to come across some point and cross the river. And again, one of the things we always stress, these are lines on a map. None of this has been officially, there's no building plans. There's no street plans. We have no funding for these roads. They're future lines on a map of where we would like a road someday, if we have money, or someone's going to build something that needs that, that infrastructure.
It was being considered for residential.
Yes, and so this plan was specifically laid out when we were considering this for residential. Previous plans that had come in had talked about putting 1,200 homes in this area. And in that case, you do need the street grid to move all of that traffic that gets generated by single-family residential. The applicant made a request both to the county and to the city. The county did consider it at their meeting in May, one of their meetings in May of last year. And they agreed to amend their plan to relocate the, the bridge. They didn't specify a specific location. They just said to connect Lover's back to 304. So this plan right now does connect Lover's to 304 this direction. With our plan, we are requesting the amendment B to connect Lover's across the edge of their, southern edge of this, the top half of the property, and then connect straight down. So they have a perimeter road on their property. This would be dedicated by the developer, and it would be in the city limits. So this will be a city road, city-owned and maintained road. Lover's Lane, on the other hand, is already a county road, oops. A county road, and it'll remain a county road. Because as you turn this corner, this area, this kind of goes off the map, is not in the city limits. So right now, there are, that's probably what people have seen so right now, is there's, the county is doing a drainage project along Lover's Road, or Lover's Lane, and doing some improvements on that road, as it's owned and maintained by the county. But these, these roads, these new roads will be owned and maintained by the city. So what we're asking tonight is for the 312 acres to remove those local connector streets and then to relocate the multimodal road.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? On 3C, it talks about, our packet talks about the whole 546 acres. It doesn't mention the 300.
No, it didn't mention the 312 because we're, 312 acres has, let's go back to this map. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. As you can see in this, this map, we didn't strictly outline it. 312 acres is up here, right? With our multimodal road going through it. And this is the point at which we need to realign that multimodal road. So we, as staff, we're looking at this lower half, which shows the whole 546 acres, saying, how do we want to amend the, the transportation network, looking at this whole 546? And what we're proposing is to relocate that multimodal road instead of going across and bisecting the property to go along the perimeter and cross the Colorado at the end of this new proposed street down here, but to leave all the local connector streets until which time they come in for the annexation and, and not amend that lower half. So if, so if for some reason they stop with the first phase, and they don't do the second phase, and they want to sell it off to a single home, a single family home builder, they'll still have to build all those streets. And they'll, and the perimeter, and connect to that perimeter road to get back out.
If I remember, there was discussion of the perimeter road when it was first submitted. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is what was approved in the development agreement as well.
Okay, by the council?
Yes, by the city council. So the consideration that we're requesting tonight is to remove those local connector streets, what we like to call the grid in this area, in the 312 acres, and to relocate the multimodal road to the edge of the 546 acre tract. So that's when we're notifying, we always, if we don't know the exact acreage, we always overnotify the acreage, so everyone's looking at the full area. So that's why we notified for the full 546, to make sure we were looking at the whole tract in this case.
So the recommendation is to, to have it go through to the El Camino River? That's the recommendation?
It would, it would connect to the El Camino.
The El Camino.
Yeah.
So.
And then continue south.
So the citizen who wrote in the comment about it removing a house, can you elaborate on what that person's thought was?
So at that lower part is an existing house, somewhere right around there. And at this point, there are no plans to remove any houses. Again, this is a line on a map. This line could still change. We don't have any money to build this bridge. This is a multi-million dollar bridge. This is something that the city and the county have been looking for grant funds for a while, transportation funds at the federal level, to try to complete this bridge. But until, but there are no actual plans, construction plans. There's no identified land acquisition. There's, there's no money to build that bridge at this point, so. At, in either location, the north location or this location.
So, so it would take out somebody's house to?
Potentially. And I think the same would probably be true if it goes, if it were to come across at Lover's Lane as well.
And so like, I guess until the bridge is built, this would potentially just be a dead-end street?
Yes.
Right?
I have one question. Imagine, I saw where it was brought up at the county, and they just kind of agreed with that, with that, the idea to go ahead and not connect it at a particular point and run it through the upper part. So is there going to be, can it move from that point in the future?
From this point? Down here? Yes.
So it could be?
Yeah, we could do another future transportation plan amendment and move it somewhere. And like we said, if for some reason this development doesn't go through, we can come back with a transportation amendment to put the road back.
Right, and so we're really just talking about not running it through that track at the, at the top, that we just recommended approval, three to two, to not run it through there. We're not running it through there, we're moving it from.
Moving it to the perimeter of the property.
To the perimeter. Makes sense.
And for the transportation plan, like I said, that's, it's a plan, kind of like future land use. It's a 30, 20-year plan. It's a line on a map until we actually have right-of-way and plans to build it, so, and funds to build it.
I think you've been looking for money for a while, right?
Yes.
I, I just, I personally feel like regardless of what happens with this, like, a road needs to be built for that part of the area, for sure. Like, I just, I spoke with someone today, and that was like their major concern was just traffic, regardless of, just right now as it is. So it would be great if the city and the county could really come together and able to get the funds to make that happen.
Make the, the bridge. Yeah.
So I'm still kind of concerned about the houses. So tonight, would we just be approving that of, the road not go through the property, and then an alternative road would be built? But we don't know where that road might be built. Are we approving that the road be built to extend to El Camino? Or are we just approving that it, that it be rerouted? And we don't, and you guys would come back to us when it's time to actually establish, or the city, when, where that road would go?
And we're asking you tonight to approve the transportation master plan that reroutes this multimodal road. The developer, with their plots, will dedicate the right-of-way to the edge of their property, which obviously doesn't go over the river, because they don't own the river. So it'll, they will have street, you know, road acts, a road right-of-way to that point. It'll still be a capital improvement, we'd call them capital improvement project for the city and the county to extend a bridge over the river.
But as Jennifer said, it's only a line on a map right now. It is not a given that anybody's house is going to be removed. And I think there would be some opposition to that. But this is, this is too, this road was something that we talked about when this first came up. And it was in the development agreement that this council approved. This would help the traffic on Lover's Lane? Am I?
So the applicant, as I said earlier, is doing a traffic impact analysis to study what improvements need to be made on Lover's Lane. And again, this is a far, this is part of what goes into the consideration when we look at this from a planning perspective, is this use on the traffic impact analysis. One of the things we look at, and you'll hear about later, is trips. How many trips does the use generate? And at what time of the day do those trips get generated? Because with houses, everyone leaves at the same time, everyone comes back at the same time. You know, the school buses all come at the same time, they all come, you know, back at the same time. So it generates traffic at specific times, it's a specific volumes. I think a house generates nine trips a day. So with this use, it generates far less trips for the commercial, or mixed use for this property. And the trips are all going to be at different times of the day than residential trips would be. So it does, it actually doesn't create as much demand on Lover's Lane as the residential development would have. But that being said, they still have to provide their proportional share of the improvements to not make traffic any worse on Lover's Lane.
I guess what I'm still needing clarity on is tonight, are we approving?
Cheryl, can you talk into your mic, please, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess what I still need clarity on is if we approve the reroute, it's not approving the road to go to El Camino. We're only approving that at some point, well, it will later be determined where that road would be rerouted to.
There will be a road that goes to El Camino. The bridge, again, will have, the actual construction of the bridge will have to be a major capital improvement project.
We don't know exactly where it will hit El Camino yet, but it will go to El Camino.
It'll go to El Camino, yes.
I think that's what I want in clarification for, because the line, I understand they don't want it going through their property, but the way I see it, it's going down, and it will be El Camino, so that will be somebody's property. So I just wanted to make sure that is where it is going, El Camino.
Yes.
Any other questions? All righty. This is item 3C. Do we have a gentleman that wishes to speak on 3C? Sir, did you want to speak on 3C?
Yes.
I need you to hand me your piece of paper, so I'll know your, your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Oh. Okay. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a recommendation. We're not approving anything, we're making a recommendation to the City Council.
I got a question a little bit more. Can we, in our recommendation, recommend a part of it, and then on the last part of it, if it impacts property down over south of El Camino, that that be coordinated, so we can make a recommendation with some stipulations on it?
We can make a recommendation with, and urge that, whatever we want, that houses not be removed, or considerations.
Council can consider it.
We can, we can make your, your motion, most anything you want.
Okay.
Right, I think that's what the majority of our concerns are, is, is to not uproot anyone behind building a road for convenience, you know?
Got it. I think everybody agrees with that.
Okay, so I'll make a recommendation to accept the approval with the stipulation that the connection south of El Camino be revisited with the county and brought up and looked at, so it doesn't impact any houses.
Sounds like a good motion, is there a second? Is there a second? If we address the concerns, is there a second? We get paid to big bucks to make the hard decisions, since we're all volunteers. If there's no, if there's no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. So it will go to the City Council with no recommend, no action by the City, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll move on to item 3D. Public hearing and consider action to recommend approval for the Bastrop, Colorado Bend zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 312.591 plus or minus acres out of the Stephen F. Austin survey from P2 Rural to PEC Employment Center, and establishing a plan on 312.591 acres, located west of Lover's Lane, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, and forward the recommendation to the City Council.
So the request for you now is, this is the actual zoning district that would be applied to the tract. So we're talking about the 312.591s, and this would rezone from the P2 Rural that will be established when the property is annexed into the city limits, and then to rezone that from P2 Rural to place type Employment Center. So this is a place type that was developed in our B3 code to provide a place for unique, I say industries, for unique businesses that are not necessarily providing those walkable spaces, those storefronts that people are going to be coming to, those complete neighborhoods. This is a specific campus that has a specific use that doesn't fit into that 720 grid, or that 330 grid mold that the rest of town fits into by nature of, it, those are more, we call them like that, interaction between the public and private realm. People are trying to get to all those locations, trying to get there in an efficient route. In this case, people are coming to this for a singular reason, to go to the movie studio that work there. That's, so that's what the appropriate zoning place type. We just also assigned a, a place type EC zoning for the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park at the last meeting. You made a recommendation for the business park that had slightly larger grids, that didn't have as many streets through it, because again, those are larger users that have specific needs for kind of industry uses, or business park usually uses for large offices, or a mix of buildings that work together on one site. So what that looks like on our zoning map here, you'll see, is the gray is our employment center base zoning district for, on the map. The rest of our colors are a mix of purples and blues. One of the things that we have talked about is that, so annexation has to be contiguous to the city limits, you have to attach the city limits. And in order to get to this property via contiguous city limits, we will annex across the river. That does not change any function of the river, that doesn't afford the city any more control over the river than we, than we have today. It's, it's just a boundary line that extends the city limits over the river. And that is coming from the Pecan Park neighborhood to the north. And we're not proposing rezoning that, so it'll stay P2 Rural, the base zoning district, that it gets annexed in at. So with the B3 codes, one of the, the changes we made was, instead of just considering a base, a base use and giving, giving a zoning out, we first want the applicant to take a step back and look at the entire site and do what's called a conceptual drainage plan. So this is a higher-level look at the land, the topography, and the proposed uses and buildings that are going to go on there, and see if they will be able to build an infrastructure for stormwater conveyance, stormwater detention, that provide, that will not cause any adverse impact to the Colorado River, or any of our drainage structures in town. So that's what you're looking at here, is our conceptual drainage plan that the applicant has submitted, and our city engineer has reviewed and approved. So this is just the first step. Before the preliminary plat comes in, there will be a preliminary drainage study that drills down and gets more data. And then before the final plat, and then site, and all the site plans on the site, we get final drainage plans, which get even more detailed. And that's when we review and determine where those detention ponds need to be, how big they need to be, how fast that water's coming out and going back into the Colorado, all of those different factors, so that these drainage does not adversely impact the Colorado River, or any of our drainage systems in town. So that's what, and so this was approved by the city engineer. For this section, the two street connections that they will be making is to the existing Lover's Lane to the east. And then they will be dedicating new right-of-way to the south, along the property border. We keep, we're calling it the East-West Road right now, it doesn't have a name, that's a little later in the process. But they'll be dedicating new right-of-way and building a new street in that location. And we'll get into the details. So one of the details we're showing you right there is, that's the connection from Lover's to this new road. And you see, it does not connect to Margie's Way. So this, none of this traffic will connect through the Margie's Way neighborhood street. You'll see that little corner will kind of be, that'll be dedicated to the city as open space, that corner between the three roads. So one of the things that we talked about in detail at the City Council meetings, while we were talking about the development agreement, was what, what is it going to look like from the road? What is, what are people going to see when they drive by this? So what you're looking at here is the proposed street detail. We tend to call them in our, in our vernacular, a public frontage plan. What, what are you seeing along the public frontage as you drive along? So you'll see here, it'll be a two-lane road, built to our rural residential standard. This is the Lover's Lane cross-section, so as people have probably noticed, there's some drainage work going on there, that the county's doing in a large 60-foot-wide easement that the property owner granted to the county to complete that work. So you'll have the street, you'll have street trees and streetlights, you'll have a sidewalk, then you'll have that large drainage swale. And then you'll have a perimeter wall fence that will be built there that will keep this development separate from the neighborhood. On the East-West Road, it's similar, except there's no drainage easement on this section. There's no county project going on in this area. So you'll see, it's a two-lane rural, rural-style road. It'll be a sidewalk, street trees and streetlights. And then set approximately about 25 feet off the road will be the perimeter fence. And you can see, this is kind of a rendering of what you would see as you drive along. Within the development, they'll have a proposed network of internal private drives. So these will not be public streets, but these will be built to a level that we can get emergency services in and out of the development. So we have to make sure that they're meeting all of our fire codes. So our fire trucks, our EMS vehicles, all have safe services to drive on and access to all the buildings, should there be a fire or an injury on the property. So you'll see, there's a number of internal drives proposed that'll meet all of those ingress and egress needs of our codes. So this is their conceptual proposed layout, and this is in accordance with the conceptual plan that you saw. Again, that conceptual plan was, I always like to call it blobby. You know, it had just kind of general swaths of recreation area, studio area. And this is showing you that actually depicted in buildings. So you'll see, there's a number of different building types that are listed, soundstage, offices, warehouse, pavilion, short-term lodging, temporary soundstage. So you'll see these buildings, you've got kind of your, your warehouse, soundstage is up at the front. So that's what'll be closest to the neighborhood. And then back here will be the open space, you have a temporary soundstage, lakes that'll also serve for detention, and other areas that they could do filming in. But that outdoor filming will be further away from the neighborhood. There is a little bit of proposed onsite accommodations that'll be built to residential standards for temporary lodging of workers and visitors to the site. So some other requirements that I talked about, so the street will be built to a rural cross-section, but sidewalk will be required on one side, along with streetlights and street trees, which is in accordance with our codes. Like I said earlier, a traffic impact analysis has been started, and those improvements will be required during what we call is the public improvement plan review, which is one of our subdivision processes. So when they're going through all those, those plating phases, we'll come back and we'll give you more details on the traffic and impact analysis with the preliminary and final plats. One of the other things that was agreed to in the development agreement is all heritage trees 26 inches and greater will be preserved. And they showed those actually on the site plan, they did survey those. Some of the standards, so the, the base EC zoning district has a base impervious cover of 80%. That being said, all of that has to be proved up. With the floodplain on this area and the large tract, they will not get anywhere close to 80% for the impervious cover. And again, all of the, those, any impervious cover that gets put down first has to have a drainage plan associated with it. Max height for the site is five stories. And any of, and all of those buildings will again, go through building code review to make sure they meet all of our fire code standards. Some of the standards that were waived in the development agreement was the max block length or block perimeters, because they're not intending to have those internal grid roads. No pedestrian shed requirements, so that's also a newer requirement in our code. A pedestrian shed is 80 acres, so in this area, that's about four pedestrian shed area. And that's looking at a mix of zoning. In this case, since it's one large user, but all of them EC, and there's no adjacent zoning to this area, that's, that would have been captured in this, any pedestrian sheds, because it's outside the city limits. There's no build-to line or lot frontage requirements in our code. It's form-based, we require all those buildings to actually be brought up to the property line and be closer to the property line to create a walkable, human-scaled environment. In this case, that's not the intended use of this property, and those buildings actually need to be set further back. And there's also no parking location restrictions. In our current code, you're not allowed to park in front of the building on residential, commercial, anything. This does not have those restrictions, because the buildings are going to be set further back from the property line. And again, on this one, the property owners, we sent them to the 61 owners within that 200-foot boundary of the 546 acres. We, we overnotify when, in these cases. We, we over notify when, in these cases. We received two responses, one, no objection, and one opposed. Staff is recommending that you hold the public hearing and then consider a recommendation to, for approval and forward to the city council. Any questions of me or the applicant is here too?
I just have one. Do we have five-story buildings in the city?
No, we have four-story buildings. The hotels are four stories currently. But five stories was our new height limit, and our fire truck can serve that.
So I know there was a lot of, one of the main, one of the main concerns from the residents was the sound. So was there a sound survey done or plans?
There's no requirement in our codes to do a sound survey. We have no standards for what a sound survey would look like. We don't have any requirements at any stage of the approval process for a sound survey. What we do have adopted is public nuisance codes. That should, sound become an issue, it'll be addressed through that, through the public nuisance process.
So I wonder what was the thought then of putting the soundstage closest to the homes? Since that was such a major concern. How would that impact that concern?
Brendan McIntyre, I'm a civil engineer with Carlson, Brigantion, Durrin. To clarify, a soundstage is where they're recording on the inside. There will be no noise bleeding from that. So I want to clarify. The, you know, I think you're envisioning an outdoor amphitheater, but it is the exact opposite. They're filming and they require a dead, quiet environment. So that is exactly the perfect use to have there. So I want to be clear, their concern is more the neighborhood bleeding in, not them bleeding out.
Just on that, if I could ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I know we did talk about an amphitheater, though, probably a private for, where, is that planned in here anywhere?
And you'll see what's called a temporary soundstage. You know, this thing kind of took a life of its own on as we were going through the development agreement. And it probably got mischaracterized as it was originally talked about as an amphitheater. But what, as we appreciate what the owner's vision is, is to have a temporary soundstage, which is similar to what you could see, that if there is something that's going to require outdoor filming, they can build a stage, similar to what you'd see at ACL or South by Southwest. So it is a temporary soundstage. Again, it took a life of its own on as being the backyard or being what you have in Hutto and an amphitheater. That is not the intent. That is not what's going to be submitted as the documents go through. It is more correctly described as a temporary soundstage that can be put up and taken down as the needs arise.
Okay, so I don't want to sound like argumentative or anything.
Sure.
So that's the plan for it to be used, but there's a potential chance that maybe a concert could happen there, right?
Absolutely, there could be, absolutely.
So with that being said, are there measures that are being taken in case that does happen? And this is not just for the people who are on the backside. I'm sure across the river, Pecan, the Pecan Grove neighborhood is going to...
I, I think that the owner is aware that, that the way this is going, will be determined is as Ms. Bill's described with nuisance and noise ordinances at the property line. So I don't think there's a concern that those existing ordinances are going to be violated. I don't know if that answered your question, but we're not anticipating it, so we haven't planned a resolution because it's not an anticipated condition. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I don't want to sit down prematurely also.
You might need the exercise.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have Kalen Champagne, who is opposed to the request. That is the only one that I have. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll entertain a motion.
Well, I want to say something first. I bet you want to make a motion, but this has been something we've been tracking. We kind of understood this when it first came on. We understood that the process is we're going to get more and more information, and they're filling out, filling in the gaps. I think they've taken some of our input regarding the setback in the trees and the traffic. Sound was an issue, but it was pointed out, even in the city, the way we handle sound is on a complaint basis. And when it becomes a problem, that's how we deal with it. And that's not a real proactive way to deal with it right at this moment. And, and I think that's the concern, but if that's the only concern, you know, we should make that noted. But I think that, in my opinion, everything that we're seeing here, we understood, at least I understood from the beginning, that this is the process. And so in my opinion, they've input, they've taken some of our input, we've given them in the past, and they're starting to formulate that. I think the issue with the road cutting through and how that's going to be resolved is a little open, open-ended. I noticed that those two roads, the east-west and then Margie's Way are like side by side. Is that how that's going to be? What does that look like? That, that wasn't really shown in the sketch too well, but...
Yeah, so they're, they're shown side by side, they'll just be for this portion right here. And then Margie's Way then takes off and goes into the neighborhood.
So it's only for a little bit that there's...
Yeah, and then they're, they're separated by, so it'll run behind the houses, but not through the neighborhood.
Right, because that was an issue.
But none of that traffic will route through the neighborhood.
Someone brought up, what am I going to be looking at in the back of my backyard? And I think they've done a, a job of showing.
And that's, yeah, so that's what Jill will be looking at from the backyard.
I'd like to see more trees and maybe a waving pathway, but that's all design intent. But I mean, there's ways to do that. And we showed, I know we sent some examples of how that's done in other areas, so, so I'm going to say, I'm going to make a motion to accept this.
I have one more question before you make your motion.
Yeah.
So the, they would be, in terms of the sound, if there were to be a, you know, takedown type of situation for a concert temporarily, would they then fall under our ordinance of, our noise ordinance of 10 o'clock or, or 11? It's 10 or 11, I think.
Yeah, so to fall under our, so if they do plan an event that's going to create noise that's in excess of our noise ordinance, there is a special event permit, noise permit they can get, but it still has limits on when that has to end. And I think it, it allows the decibels to be slightly higher, but not a lot higher. So, and so that's something, but we definitely know about it, so the police knows to go out there and check the levels, so.
And lighting, I know that that was another concern. Is this where we would talk about that, or is that for a later conversation?
You can talk about it now. They're, they've agreed to meet all of our lighting requirements of our code. So they can't stay, no, they can have no spill-over light at the property line. All permanent lighting has to be shielded in accordance with our code, be the right color, temperatures, all those things. They'll have some, and it's already built into our light ordinance that there are some parameters for temporary lighting. So for sports fields, for special events, there's temporary lighting, but all of it has to be in compliance with Chapter 6 in our B3 code.
And they're not getting a break from everybody else in the city.
No, it's the same, they'll be under the same lighting requirements as the rest of the city.
Lighting and concerts in the city, they're under, they're basically playing game with what we have for everyone else. I don't see that we're cutting any, anything back there. If anything, we're stepping it up a little bit with what we've done by, by addressing lighting. City of Bastrop is a, I want to say we're still dark sky compliant, so we've stepped up our lighting ordinance, so it has to be downcast, shielded. So that's a good thing. It's not going to be bright spaceship-looking stuff out there. But again, I'm going to make a motion that we, we continue with the process.
Hang on a sec.
I just want to say one thing, just to agree with you on the proposed street. I, I just personally think that it needs to be, needs to not look as industrial, and it should have a little bit more vegetation, like more neighborhood-friendly of a look than...
Along the perimeter?
Right.
Those are all, all things that we can work on. All right, go Pablo.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to approve the...
To make a recommendation to the city council for approval.
Make a recommendation to the city council for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Pablo Serna?
Aye.
Shirley?
Aye.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
No.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes, we'll go with this, yes.
Thank you. I know there's been some concern expressed by some of, some residents that they haven't seen this information. They don't know what's going on. This is the process. The developer meets with planning, planning department. They develop a project. Planning makes them submit what they need in order to be able to evaluate whether this fits with what we are doing or not. Then they bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we make, excuse me, we make a recommendation after public hearings, when people are encouraged to let us know how they feel. Goes to the city council, which will be, it'll be heard twice there. People can comment there. So whatever we recommend tonight has a long way to go before it's approved. And it has even a longer way to go before it's ever, a spade ever goes in the dirt. So this is just a first step. So with that, I will, did I ever, did I ever close the public hearing? I think I did. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to 3E. Consider action to approve Bastrop Grove, Section 3, Lot 7, final plat being 1.112 acres out of the Nancy Blakey Survey Abstract Number 98, located south of State Highway 71, within the city limits of Bastrop, shown, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Allison?
Good evening. All right, so this plat is a one-lot commercial plat just south of Highway 71 and east of State Highway 304. As you can see, it is in the same development as the Seaton Hospital. It's just over an acre, and as I said, it's a commercial lot. It will take access off of an existing driveway, which has a deceleration lane on the frontage road. And a public improvement plan was not required for this particular final plat because there were no extensions of public utilities needed. So here's a picture of the plat. As you can see, it fronts on the State Highway 71 frontage road, but it will take access off of, here we go. This is the driveway. It will take access there. It has drainage easement that conveys to the large channel further to the east and will provide public access across the lot as well. All right, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? If not, I will consider a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion is to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Pablo Serna?
Aye.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Shirley?
Aye.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, thank you. Forwarded to the city council. Item 3F, consider action to approve the Legends Cove, Section 2, final plat being 35.228 acres out of the Stephen F. Austin Survey Abstract Number 3, located southwest of Sayers Road, within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Go on, you're on again.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this is a fairly large, 35 acres final plat for Phase 2 of the Legends Cove subdivision. This is north of the city limits, off of Sayers Road. Phase 1 was a three-lot minor plat that was approved administratively, as all three lots had access and utilities off of Sayers Road. There will be 20 lots with three open space lots. All the lots are over an acre. It dedicates four local streets that connect back to Sayers Road. Drainage flows to the general west of this property and eventually into a tributary that goes into Piney Creek. The utilities will be individual water wells for domestic water service. Aqua will provide fire flow. And each lot will have a septic system, so your OSSF facility. All right, and here's a picture of that plat. You have the existing Sayers Road and the three lots of Phase 1 here. Then you have your large, your long road along the southern boundary with your three new roads connecting to neighboring properties. Those roads create that 720-foot block grid to provide better connectivity throughout the ETJ. All right, and staff recommends approval.
Where those three roads connect to?
Right now, the neighboring property is undeveloped. So those, here we go. Okay, so the road to Sayers that runs the length of the property is on this side.
Okay.
And then the other three roads connect towards this area. And so...
Which is undeveloped right now.
Yes, which is currently undeveloped. A couple of those parcels are actually landlocked, and so that gives them a way to get a public road towards them.
Staff recommends approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any questions?
I do. So...
Go figure.
Well, this is a comment more than a question. I know that the Code Group Commission looked at adding in the WALEN infill code. Yes, they had an acronym, I forgot what it was. But basically, it's a code that helps with mitigating underbrush and creating a safer and maybe some materials that are a little bit better built for when we're up against a force. And here we have all this development going out there. And at the time, the fire chief basically said there wasn't enough information to include that in our code update. And I just wanted to find out, where are we with that? And are we going to ever look at adding that? Because that would impact this kind of development, I would think.
So the, it's the Wildlife Urban Interface, or WUI, short, you know, normally it's just called the WUI by people who...
Yes.
...like acronyms. When you look at how that code is applicable and how it's applied to property, Bastrop is actually pretty heavily vegetated. Even though it is a town that is urbanizing, it's not considered as urban as, say, a larger cities downtown. There's still a fair amount of vegetation and tree cover. And so when we were looking at adopting all of those codes, it actually put most of the city in, in that interface area. And so when you're looking at how that would actually impact people and how it affects, how they remodel their home and how, you know, it could affect how you landscape your home and how you landscape your property, there wasn't enough information to be 100% sure that that was the best, in the best interest of the community, even though the intent of that code is fantastic. There wasn't enough information to figure out how it would apply and how it could be implemented well.
I will say, so the, the fire, fire chief is looking at how we do want to apply the WUI code. So he has been doing additional research on what amendments may be needed to make, may be needed to make to that and still adopt it so it would apply to those heavily tree areas. So that's something that's still in the works, something that I believe the fire chief intends on bringing back to the construction standards board for adoption. We're just not quite there yet. So, but it is something we're still working on, so.
I think it's, it's critical, especially now that we're basically going to approve development up against this area, and we have a chance now to say, hey, you got to watch this, this undergrowth, make room for that. Oh, and you have to build, you know, your roofs in a certain way so that they don't catch on fire and step up your materials. So I think that the fire chief needs to really dig into this...
Yeah.
...and lead the effort, or he's basically putting a lot of people at risk.
And that's one of the other, as we'll have to consider, is I don't know if we can adopt so the WUI, as we like to call it, is part of the International Code Council, Code of, family of codes, which generally only apply to the city limits. So that's one of the things that we'll have to look at, is how does that code actually apply to the ETJ? And are there other things that maybe we need to put those standards in the subdivision regulations instead? So that's, that's, that's kind of tandem discussions that we need to have, is where would that code apply? And is there maybe another way to also approach those issues when you start to get to those rural developments in the ETJ? So a lot of different things to consider, and... And those are all things we're working on, working on ETJ standards, we're working on the codes, it's just, unfortunately, there's only.
We had a chance to.
Only so many of us.
And, and they actually did not recommend, I was surprised. I listened to the, to the meeting in 2019, and it came up, and they actually pulled that one out.
And it was, again, as Allison said, it was confusion over, because it literally does extend the area that would be, have been default adopted, all the way to the Colorado River. So all of your houses downtown would have been required to, on every remodel, provide those code. And so that was, there was some concern amongst the contractor community about that, so.
Well, I imagine people wanna know that we're basically lowering the bar when it comes to development up against our forest that's catching on fire. And we have a chance to raise the bar because we have, we're in a fire area, and we're number, it's, Austin metro area is number four, and they just recently adopted the WUI. And, and so I think we really dropped the ball there. And we can, we can pull things out. We don't have to take it 100%. So somebody just needs to lead that effort, and I'm, you know, I'm looking at the fire chief to do that.
Yeah, and that, and the intention wasn't to never adopt it, it was the intention to, to not adopt it at the time and do some more research and bring it back. So that was the intention, not to never adopt it. It was to provide more research, because there were a lot of unanswered questions from the Construction Standards Board at the time. So it's, but it's still on the table, so.
Could you please convey the Planning and Zoning Commission's hope that it will be expedited in doing the research and hopefully brought back soon?
We will, I will do so.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, if you can pull up this map again. Okay, thank you. So this backs up to Sayers Road. I'm just trying in my brain, wrap my head around the streets. This, and I can't read anymore. Is that Cirrus, Cirrus Lane? What is that lane?
Cirrus Lane. They're named after cloud types, I believe.
Is that a road?
Yes, that will be a road.
That is an existing road?
Oh, that's not an existing road, no. That would be a new road.
It will be a road, okay. I was like, where is that road? Okay, that makes sense. And then the three roads that will join that road? So that back piece of that is just field and land, right?
Yes.
Is there a fence back there? Does it dead end? Is it a cul-de-sac? How is that going to end? Everyone has to come out one way.
So, yes, so everyone would come out on Cirrus Lane to Sayers Road. There would be temporary turnarounds at the end of the other three streets and at the end of Cirrus Lane, so that you can get a fire truck down and turn around, and people have a way to turn around until that road does stub out in the future.
Can we assume that the property, let me get my directions right, to the north of that, that's, that's still under ownership of someone else?
Correct.
Okay.
Last, last time we looked, yes.
Okay. Are there plans for this developer to expand this spot here, or this is all that they have to work with?
This is all they've submitted.
Okay.
Is there any concern about the fact that there, the road to be built will provide the only way for folks to get out in case there's a fire?
Since it's only 20 lots, it does not meet the fire code requirement for a secondary exit. I believe that's at 30.
At 30, okay. We do have one person who wishes to speak. Alexandra Fight.
Y'all might have to help me if I pass out. You might have to read the rest of it.
You have, we have three minutes, okay?
We would, well, Section One would like to ask you guys to temporarily halt it. I'm supposed to get evicted in April, so if you could wait till then, that would be great. I'm hoping for it. We have a shared well that's on Section Two, Block A, Lot Four currently. We are not in compliance with Aqua's rules and regulations, so we can't get Aqua water right now. We're pending litigation with the Public Utility Commission regarding Aqua and Blue Bonnet Electric. Let's see, the, the development permits that were submitted to the county were submitted stating that we would be serviced with Aqua, but we're not. The engineer also left out key items to Section One development that are in Section Two's plans in the plots. James Totten with the groundwater, or the general manager with the Lost Pines Groundwater District. We have, the rule in the Lost Pines Groundwater District is a water well used to supply water for a subdivision of land for which a plot approval is required by Chapter 232 Local Government Code is not an exempt well, but ours is considered an exempt well right now. And it's not supposed to be. We, yeah, that's pretty much all I have besides, we also have a pending EPA investigation into the water situation and the falsified documentation for our FHA loans. Sorry, I'm just.
So the main thing you're wanting to clarify is who's gonna supply the water there? Is that what you're asking?
No, I, I was just gonna ask y'all to wait until our litigation was done. We have pending litigation with the developer and others involved, like who our home builders were, so.
Where is the property in question that you have, that you're in litigation on?
All, all of Section One.
All of Section One. Okay. You have 38 seconds.
Oh.
Thank you.
I just don't wanna pass out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, commissioners, do you have any, any comments?
So this is in the ETJ. It's met all of our requirements. Staff has looked at it and has said this is good to go. I mean, it's.
Yes.
By right, this owner has that. Step, right now, they need an answer, basically. There's no reason to deny it, I don't see.
Right, so that this plat meets all of the requirements, and by state law, if it meets all the requirements, you have to approve it.
That's right.
That being said, you know, the phase, the Aqua feasibility study for this project contemplated Phase One and Phase Two happening closer together than they ended up happening. And so I believe there are a few Phase One things that will impact Phase One that will be approved with the Phase Two improvements, so.
So we're not to consider any kind of pending litigation? It doesn't have anything to do directly with whether the developer meets what we require?
The litigation does not impact the subdivision's ability to meet the subdivision requirements.
Thank you.
We're just looking at the final plat. Correct. And it meets what we're doing, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the plat as is.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Pablo Serna.
Aye.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Cheryl Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Let me find my agenda. Where did it go?
Workshop.
Okay, workshop. Item four, workshop, presentation, presentation on traffic impact analysis best practices.
Yes, so this is, Pablo requested this, I believe, at our November meeting. So there's been a lot of talk about traffic impact analysis and what, and those being done, at what stage do they get done? And, and, you know, how is that gonna help traffic in town? So we have our, we, we use a third-party service with Kimley Horn to do our traffic impact analysis review. We don't have anyone in house that does that. And so we have Santiago here with Kimley Horn, who's gonna give you a presentation on best practices for TIA's and kind of the basics of it, so.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and chair. As Jennifer said, my name is Santiago Raca, I'm with Kimley Horn. I have nine years of experience practicing in the Austin area with both reviewing TIA's and completing TIA's. So I have a lot of knowledge with this topic, so I'm happy to go through the presentation and answer any questions. And my colleague Jake Gutikunzis, who's been reviewing TIA's for, for the city. Just a rough outline of the presentation, just gonna deal, go over some policy deals to deal with growth, and then go into some of the details of a TIA, some additional policies that can complement a TIA policy, and then performance-based evaluation. Really, one of the key things that a TIA ordinance can do, or a TIA policy can do, is help with transportation funding. Funding needs are two, in two buckets, it's existing needs and growth needs. Existing needs are just based on maintenance operations, you know, construction that's come in. And growth needs are, growth needs are created by what, what the word says, growth, and it needs capital. So how do you creatively fund your infrastructure needs without facing legal challenges? There's a lot of funding options. You guys probably know most of these, but I think that some of the ones that are not as, that are, that are more driven by the developer and can be, that are not driven by the developer are a TIA and an impact fee. TRIS and MUDs and, and things like that, developer agreements can always be driven as a option for the developer, and that the TIA would be a requirement for the developer instead. So that can help with a lot of the transportation funding. Impact fees is another level. That is something that's being put forth by a lot of municipalities around the, around the area. Why is that important for growth? You know, infrastructure cost is increasing daily, so tax, taxes are just not keeping up. Federal and state funding is also not keeping up with the growth, specifically the incredible growth that we're seeing in this area. And growth should pay for growth. It just makes sense, right? If you are bringing in a lot of traffic, a lot of infrastructure and affecting and using the infrastructure, you should also be responsible for some sort of additional funding for that infrastructure. The, the main reasoning for a TIA policy, and I've seen this on both sides, right? I, I do, do TIA's for, for developments, and I also review TIA's for cities like Cedar Park and Hutto. The system needs some kind of structure in order to be predictable, equitable, transparent, flexible, and legal and consistent. A lack of these ordinances could lead to a variety of issues when TIA's are completed by different firms, where there's a lot of practices that can be made. And it kind of loses its, its bite if you don't have the ordinance that says, hey, these are the standards that you need to follow, and the requirements that need to be met by the applicants. That predictability makes the staff job a lot easier as well, and it makes the applicant job a lot easier because they know what they're getting into. Equitable, you know, a, a donut shop shouldn't be paying as much as a Tesla factory. So something that's equitable and makes sense is also something that is recommendable and can be put into the policy. And the flexibility of collecting the funds that are identified in the traffic study are really, is really important. Flexibility to be able to collect funds into a bucket that can be used at a later time, flexibility to make requirements of developers to build infrastructure, and the flexibility to make them build infrastructure. So really, three buckets of ability to collect funds and make infrastructure improvements. There's, there's a concept of border streets that's also something that could be considered. Border streets do require a certain update to a thorough plan or a mobility plan. The concept would be that you improve, you're, you are required to improve your border street per the thorough plan or mobility plan. A little bit of the issue that is, I know that Bastrop does the block system, so if you get a waiver for that, then it becomes a little bit difficult. And a lot, I, I understand that a lot of people have been asking for waivers, so. The border street is something else that, that is implemented in other cities. Fort Worth does, does do this, Frisco does do this.
How do you define a border street?
Would be anything on your frontage, maybe is a better way to put it. So if you have frontage on any road, that's your border street. One street over would no longer be your border street. I'll go into what a TIA is. You guys let me know if I'm getting too nerdy. I do like to nerd out about this stuff. So it, it really starts with trip generation. There's a nationally-approved manual that put forward by ITE. That gives you a way to calculate the number of vehicles that are being generated in a daily AM, MPM peak, which is the normal analysis time. So the morning and the afternoon peaks is the normal, the normal analysis times. And it also shows you the split for inbound and outbound. I think it was mentioned earlier, houses have a different inbound and outbound timeline than a retail or an office. So ITE sets that apart. It's a nationally-standard use that is used pretty much everywhere. This is an example of a trip generation. Apologize if it's a little small, but it, as you can see, has a lot of data. This is for single families. So this is the data that we use, thousands and thousands of cases. Other uses don't have as much data, but there is, this is all backed up by studies done across the country. The trip threshold is really the, the way that most municipalities, trip threshold is the way that municipalities require TIA's. So most municipalities have a, either a daily or a peak hour threshold, either 2,000 trips or a peak hour of 100 or 200 peak hour trips. So any, the concept would be, an applicant would come in and say, hey, I'm proposing this, my daily trip calculation is over 2,000 trips. And you would say, okay, well, a TIA is required. Or if the peak hour generation, because there are certain uses that are heavy on the peaks, but not much on the daily. So that could also be used as a requirement for a, a study. I already went over kind of the daily threshold, you know, some of the other things that can be done on a TIA would be safety requirements. ASHTO and TEXDOT have guidelines for when turn lanes are required. If the Transportation Criteria Manual doesn't specify that, you can also say in your ordinance and your policies that you would follow ASHTO or TEXDOT or whatever guideline that you can have. There's also other literature, NHCRP has literature for turn lanes. So the TIA is a great tool to start providing those turn lanes at intersections, left and right turn lanes. Traffic signal warrant studies. A lot of times, signals, traffic signals go unnoticed when they need, and you find out you need them too late. So what a kind of TIA can do is project whether, whether a traffic signal would be needed once, once the development is built out. We would then check it at the end and say, hey, okay, well, actual trips, did, did it warrant a TIA as traffic signal at intersection or not? Border street improvements, sidewalks, you know, bike lanes if, if, if there are needs or any improvements to the road. If the road has low pavement grades or anything like that, it's something else that you can put in as a part of the ordinance. The prorata versus, prorata versus improvements versus impact fee is a little bit of what I talked about earlier. There are ways to get the TIA's, which is probably the most important part of the TIA, which is, hey, what's, what's the money? So prorata is a way to use the fair share of the developers. That's the equitable part. So if you are producing a lot higher percentage of trips, then you would pay more for an improvement. Improvement itself, you know, you could come to an agreement that says, hey, we feel like your, your impact is a set amount of dollars that also equates to this improvement that we really need. We don't want your money. Developers have sometimes the ability to get things done faster. So you could, you could set in your ordinances that, or in your policy, that the developer would be responsible for building the improvement. That's helpful in the sense of they can move things faster at times. And the last one's the impact fee. It's, it's a modified version of prorata, because you can just charge it at the start of the project, and it's a lot more predictable. Prorata is very dependent on what comes out. The impact fee is just a flat rate based on trips. Many cities have recently put into place Georgetown, Brown Rock, Flugerville, and Leander. So it's kind of a, a fee that's predictable, and you can put it in. Usually, there's a spreadsheet or tool that can be used by a developer to put in their development size, and it spits out the fee. You can get into that, a lot of offsets and things like that, if the developer chooses to make improvements. But that's sort of the concept of the impact fee. It gives you a little bit more predictability than the prorata. But you may not get the improvements where you want them. The prorata kind of gives you, hey, like, this is really what's needed. The impact fee's a little bit more, kind of like a wastewater impact fee. Prorata share considerations, I touched on this. It's just a fair share. It's, it's got its issues besides what I've already talked about. It's the last person in, sometimes gets hit harder because, you know, the more development comes in, the, the less existing traffic there is, so kind of the percentages play out. So it's a, it's not a perfect way to do it. It is a, a way that is used to be doing it. It's, it requires a lot of administration. It requires a lot from the, from staff, and it kind of becomes a negotiation sometimes just because it can be, there's a lot of assumptions in a TIA, and one assumption change could really fluctuate your prorata. A little bit on the administrative side of the TIs. The, the slide says to get a third-party review help. That's really common for municipalities this size because of staffing issues. That's not the case everywhere. You can have your own staff review it, but I know staff is busy, so. So the, the third-party kind of brings you some, some expertises that, that is very commonly used. Like I said, City of Hutto does it, City of Georgetown does it, City of Cedar Park does it. The big one, City of Austin, obviously doesn't need to. But they do have staff that supplements their staff, so it's not like they're doing it all in-house. They can often result in lengthy negotiations. Like I said, the impact fee's a little bit cleaner because it's upfront. It comes in at the, and it's predictable. It needs good policy. It needs expiration. You know, you don't want a TIA done. The, the municipalities have learned, you need to put an expiration on TIs because a developer can come into a study. We see studies from like 2006, and it's like, hey, I already did this in 2006, and they don't have an expiration timeline? And then it's like, well, in 2006, it's not the same, and, and their grandfather in. So it's important to think about expiration and update requirements, timelines like that. And then you get into the partial funds. If you, if you get into the prorata discussion where you get 50% of a, of a traffic signal cost in one TIA, then the other one does 10%, the other one does 20, and it kind of becomes like, okay, well, we're never going to collect the full amount. So how do we spend these funds? So need to be able to write in the policy and a way to write to, to use funds and spend funds correctly. Scoping, the TIA is important. That's a little bit of a newest, nuance for the applicants, is to make sure that we're all in agreement of what's going to be studied. That is done sometimes with TEXDOT and county, depending on the access roads. If you're taking access on a TEXDOT road, which we do have one here in Bastrop that's pretty big, TEXDOT will want to be involved, and they have their own trip thresholds, and they have their own sort of policies. So you want to be able to have flexibility to bring them into the tent and work with them. Bastrop County also has some TIA requirements. It's less than what TEXDOT does, they just, they just don't do it as often. The biggest county that does do a lot of traffic impact analysis is Travis County, in, in my purview. I'm sure there's other counties that do a lot. I, you know, I talked a little bit about the border street policy. That's a little, it's, it's, it's important to have a really thorough master plan, and a lot of waivers on block lengths and things like that kind of create an issue with the, with the border street because it changes the border streets on the master plan. So it kind of goes hand in hand. It's a policy that would need to be hand in hand with, with thorough for a master plan or, or any transportation plan. The right-of-way is really important, though, in the border streets, because if you have a thorough for a plan, it gives you the ability to say, hey, we need this right-of-way. It's in our plan. You're going to dedicate it. That's important. A lot of municipalities, especially in Austin, they didn't have that type of stuff, and they have buildings that are impeding them from making their roads the width that they need them to be. So border street is a policy that could be either an augmentation to a TIA policy, but it does have its challenges with, with the fact that it relies on, on other plans. Interagency coordination, I, I touched on that a little bit, and I can touch on it a little bit more if you guys want, but it's just making sure that TEXDOT is, is consulted with development that touches TEXDOT roadways as main access. Developers do have to get a driveway permit from TEXDOT, so they are immediately also dealing with the TEXDOT offices. And if they require a TIA and the city requires a TIA, and they're not the same, it could lead to some issues moving forward. So it's always good to have that interjurisdictional coordination. Same with the county and anything like that. A decision really needs to be made on the ETJ. ETJ is an interesting place where most cities require TIs in the ETJ, even though they may have a little bit of jurisdictional power there. And that's something that the city would have to make a list of decision on. The City of Austin doesn't require TIs in the ETJ, but that's really because Travis County does a lot of that heavy lifting for them. So they could go either way, but that's, that's one of the things that really needs to be narrowed down on the policy. Understanding roadway plants and patterns, you know, connect TV bottlenecks, understanding, hey, what are the projects upstream and downstream of us? I see you come in and leave the city is important, and understanding what TEXDOT wants and needs and their plans is, is really important. Proportionality of requirements, you know, making sure that what you're asking is legal. I won't dive too much into that, but there is a cap on what a municipality can ask of a developer. That's really it. I know I may have rushed through that. I really wanted to get your thoughts and kind of put out a lot of information. I'm happy to answer questions, and then leave, leave a card or my contact. And Jake, my partner, is also available to come back and do presentations or anything that you guys would like.
Question. So we recently had a project where we were looking at rezone, and it kept coming back that, I understand, they didn't, they weren't required to do a TIA. What, is there a, what's a trigger? And you're familiar with, there was a rezoning that was going to happen on Farm Street? And the concern was about traffic, and rightly so. But I understand it did not trigger a TIA. So I just wondered, can you go through what that thinking is?
Yeah, so most municipalities have wrote in a trigger by trips. However, they've also wrote in a trigger that basically says that the city engineer can require a TIA for anything. That then backs down to staff, and staff can act as the city engineer. So if you have a, even if it's a donut shop, that, that the city may feel strongly that needs to be analyzed on some of the impacts that it would do, you could still trigger a TIA. That's something that's written in a, a lot of ordinance and codes. If that feels a little too heavy-handed, you could, you could set your trip thresholds at the, at the, at the point that you want it. So in, in Travis County, the trip threshold for daily trips is 1,000 trips. In City of Austin is 2,000 daily trips. That may not mean a lot to you, but so for multifamily, it really is a big change, right? So in Travis County, it's a threshold of about 220 multifamily homes, and in City of Austin, it's about 360 units. So that, that threshold is important to think about on, on, when writing the policy, on thinking what, what's going to be your threshold. You can also set a peak hour threshold. City of Buda has a 200 peak hour threshold, which kind of helps with land uses, more, more warehouses that just don't generate a lot of daily traffic, but generate a lot of peak hour traffic. So, so there's different ways to set up that, that trigger stuff.
So from my understanding, I noticed in your equation you had there dwelling units, you had made an assumption on the number there, that one right there. So you had .99 vehicles per dwelling unit, PM peak. Is that what the developer's going to use, that formula? And then they'll show, hey, we're not exceeding 1,000? And so we don't have to do a TIA?
Correct, yeah. They would use, so that is a, the rate that is set by IT. So the, the rates are known by everyone. It's a commonly-used known, so they would use that rate to determine their, their amount of trips generated, and then that would, that would give you the, the trigger yes or no.
So the perception, I guess, was that we were letting this development not even have to do a traffic impact analysis, and the truth really was, they weren't really triggering one because they weren't putting that much development in.
Correct, that's possibly it. Exactly.
I have a stupid question. So if, if a TIA is done, it's based on the traffic that's going through currently, correct?
It, the TIA would not be done for the traffic currently, so the, well, it sort of depends on your policy, but most commonly, the TIA, what it does is does an existing analysis of your infrastructure today, and then it projects that to the build-out year, so the final, when, when the development would open. So it actually analyzes a future year, usually, usually just one. So a multifamily deal usually takes two years to build, two, three years. So it would analyze, if they did one today, they would analyze 2024. And they would use historical data to determine the growth that is expected for today's traffic.
I guess that's where my interest is. How, how are they able to anticipate the amount of traffic in six months? Or when the development project ends? Or in a housing-type situation where there's an apartment? How are they able to anticipate what the traffic is going to be like in terms of people that live there and visitors to be able to assess what the impact would be to a community?
So that's what this is. This is based, this is a manual that's based on, on studies. Like I said, I think this one may have well over 100 studies. So they have gone through, so this is a single family, so they've gone through and said, okay, this single-family development has 100 homes in it. And they've put down counters and said, okay, how many trips did that 100-family development generate? And they plot them in that graph. And then they do another one, and another one, and another one, and another one. So that would spit out how many, that gives, that will spit out a rate of how many trips a specific development would generate. So multifamily has done that many studies, single-family has done that many study warehouses, it has everything, tire shops, there's, there's, there's a lot of land uses. So that's how they're, they're using commonly-used manuals to predict the traffic, which actually end up being, I've done a couple of analysis where developers don't believe that they're generating that much traffic, ends up being close or actually lower. This is actually turned, has turned out to be conservative in a lot of cases that I've dealt with. That doesn't mean it's always conservative. Sometimes they just end up generating more. Yeah, that was definitely not a stupid question.
Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment that I really appreciate the large font on the package.
I will tell, I would, I will tell Jake, that was nothing, he prepared the TIA presentation. I, I am just his mouthpiece today.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
One thing I want to clarify, because I was here for the whole Farm Street, that maybe you can help me clarify, and it kind of goes towards, I think, what Cheryl was asking. So a lot of the concerns brought up on the project were for the existing traffic that was already creating traffic problems. If the developer had done that TIA, and they, and at 120 units, my rough back-of-the-napkin math, only had them at a little over 900 trips, they are only responsible for those 900 trips. So those already 5,000 trips that went through that intersection caused by the school or all the other houses around it, they don't have to fix that problem. They only have to fix, what do you say, the proportional share? That percentage that they're causing the problem. So if their, if their percentage of the problem was only 5% of the problem, and the answer is, we need to put in a traffic light, they get to pay 5% of that traffic light, and we've got to find the other 95% to fix the existing problem. So that's why I said sometimes, it sounds like, oh, a TIA will tell us what, will fix it. Well, it tells the proportion that'll fix it. It may not. So on a really large development, yeah, they may be the one that has to build that traffic light, that traffic signal, because they're so big. But on these smaller ones, and that's kind of where we've come at, so why we've adopted this proactive grid, it's easier just to put in these parallel routes and these streets as we've already planned them, than to try to take each 100-acre tract and puzzle-piece them all together with, you know, 10 TIs, because each one's going to say something a little different. So that's kind of the downside to TIs. On a really large development, super helpful. On TEXDOT roads, they have a very specific answer. Little tiny projects, not as helpful. So that's my take, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely right. The, the, the counter would be an impact fee, like I was talking about, which would basically set up a fee up front for every development size that is based on their vehicle trips. So there's no arguments, and that fee can go, that study has a, a, a set of improvement that is, have already been identified, and then they can prioritize those improvements, and that fee can go towards the most important of those improvements. So it comes with a study of all of the existing issues. And so if that, that issue is, the traffic signal, we already have it identified, that apartment would pay their fee instead of doing a TIA, or they could choose to do a TIA to prove that there's a different improvement that they would want to do, that, that size probably wouldn't. But they would take that fee and go towards the bucket. However, the city could use that money for something besides that traffic signal if they prioritize something else. The difference with that, with the TIA, is it's most usually identified for a specific improvement, and the city may not legally be able to use that money for something else. It would have to use it for that traffic signal, and it kind of sits there and loses its value. The impact fee may generate more funds and quicker get to some of the improvements, maybe not the specific improvement, but, but it would generate funds for improvements, period.
So if there's a large enough negative impact, right? Would that shut down whatever, or you, or, or would there continually, continuously be resolutions sought after?
I'm going to try to kind of translate the question first. So I think you're saying if the development is making a big enough dent in a problem, would they continue to try?
Try, right.
Or would we be able to say, hey, this is, this is impossible, it won't work?
Right.
I think that really depends on staff and the appetite for it. So staff could say, hey, you're causing this big issue. Unless you do this, your development will not be, like, approved. So I'm going to go really off the rails and say, hey, like, the development needs to build an overpass. And staff can stand and say, hey, you create enough traffic that you have to do an overpass. Staff can stand by that, you guys can stand by that, and if the developer disagrees, their, their only possible action would be to reduce their, their density, to show, to have less impact. They could try to find creative ways, but if you have a pretty tight policy and pretty tight TIA guidelines, it's, it's pretty difficult to, to get away from that. So yes, they could keep trying, but they have to get through staff, and if staff, staff stands or, or the third-party reviewer stands, then they, they would give them no choice. I actually just dealt with this in Cedar Park where it just, it wasn't the right place. The, the development was having too much impact, and they didn't want to build the infrastructure that, that was required of them, and so they, they walked.
Thank you. And I think that's how I see this, is we're looking for something that's going to, as a tool, basically, to help us guide policy and our development and say, all right, like, growth pays for growth, and this is that opportunity. But when we have already a problem, like, I live right by the, the elementary school in Buda, and my street's loaded up with cars, so that problem exists already. And so I, I think this is just saying, well, we need to do something about it now. Any development that was going to happen on Farm Street, and I think they're still moving forward, it's still going to contribute. And, and so I don't think we're ever going to get away from that. It was just like, unless there's nothing happening there, yeah. I don't think that's going to be.
And nothing happened and ain't going to happen.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All righty. We'll work, move on to item five, updates. Update on recent city council actions regarding the planning department items.
First one's not a council item, but it is, just to remind everyone, so right now, the city has just kicked off drainage master plan study. So that actually just kicked off last night. We had a public meeting to gather public input. We have a website online, and if you go to the website there, or just, it's linked on the planning main page. There's a questionnaire, so if you or anyone you know has experienced drainage or flooding issues through town, or they know, they drive through somewhere that they're concerned about, they can identify that in the survey. And our consultants are gathering all that information so they can go study those areas. So just a reminder, that's going on, that'll be going on for the next several months. It's part of our comprehensive plan, another one of our elements. Our director of engineering is the one. Fabiola is leading up that effort, so.
And the more information they have, the more accurate their study can be.
Is this on the, the social media, City of Bastrop's social media?
Yeah, we pushed it out on Facebook, and actually, I think we pushed it out on Everbridge on the email system, too.
Yeah, it just happened last night.
It just happened last night, yeah. So we're, but there'll be, I think, at least one other public meeting throughout this process to talk about it, and we'll be pushing out information on this webpage on our site, so you can follow it there. But yeah, the first step, and the, the survey's open through the end of February.
Yeah, that's where I was going to get to. That's the end date, okay.
Yep, end of February, so please, if you know of flooding issues, you know people that have flooding issues, fill that out so we can get better data. So, and we use, our consultant is half and associates, and they're the ones that have already done the studies on Piney Creek and Gil's Branch. So they've already got a lot of that data for those, but this is actually looking at the entire city limits, looking at some of those other watersheds that haven't previously been studied as much. So that's one update. And the second update is the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park zoning And the second update is the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park zoning concept scheme that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission in December, went to city council at the two meetings in January and was approved on January 25th. So that establishes, there was a portion of the park that was still zone P two. So that established P E C on that other portion and laid out their future road network through that subdivision. So I think that's our only updates from the city council. Updates on our monthly permit volume, which you should have a copy in front of you. It was obviously last quarter, or last month was Christmas, so things usually slow down a little bit. I'm trying to find my new commercial. But we still did get seventeen new residential permits in for the month of December. Planning, the numbers don't look super high, but substantively, they're, they're very busy. We've had a lot of, that are gonna be coming for you, for you all, zoning concept schemes. These are, like I said, they're in the entitlement phases. So these are very time intensive. We gotta do a lot of back and forth about what the developer's going to put, especially since we're also laying out the road networks with those. So there's a lot of discussion about how these developments will meet our building block code. So that's, that'll, you'll, you'll be seeing busier agendas coming up. Any questions on our monthly totals? I said, usually, it's usually, hopefully slows down a little bit for the month of December. I will say, this was one of those years where I guess tax laws were changing. So people were trying to get properties bought and sold before the end of the year. So that always, we get a lot of emails and updates. So do we have any requests for future agenda items?
So I do have a question and maybe even a statement. So I didn't catch last night's council meeting, but I did catch the one from two weeks ago. And it was brought up about the size of the P and Z. Right? Can we get some information on there? We're like, what are the, what are the plans?
So, and this, so the size, the co, the size, not the composition, but the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission is mandated in the city charter. So the city charter is the part of the city code that actually has to go before the voters to change. So it's basically the city's constitution on how we function. So that was adopted back when we became a home rule city fifteen years ago. I think it's been, it was updated four or five years ago last.
It's been longer than that.
Yeah. So the, one of the recommendations that was made was to be able to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're the largest board or commission in the city right now. One of the issues, just, we only have seven chairs and mics up here, so we have nine people. It gets a little tight. But it also is harder to get a quorum. So we only have a quorum tonight. If anyone more, one more person had been done, we would not have had a meeting tonight. Because you have to have five out of nine people to have a meeting. So the recommendation has to, been to see if voters will approve having a minimum of seven people. That doesn't mean, so what the city attorney brought back at the last meeting was to set in the charter, a minimum of seven P and Z members. We could have more if we adopt it by ordinance, but the minimum will be seven. So, so if we're having a year that we're having trouble getting members or we're having trouble getting attendance, we could change the code to reduce that down to seven. So it'll still require, I think, I don't know if, I'll have to follow up on if it needs an ordinance change. So this is the charter change, if it passes. So that does have to go to the voters for approval in May. And then we'll have to, if we want to reduce the numbers, I think, have to bring it back as an ordinance change in the B three code on what the composition of P and Z looks like.
And I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. But it could be if we weren't there and the four people there missing weren't here, you'd have Ishmael by himself. At least we still do have a quorum. And I don't remember the last time we, we could not hold a meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So, but I think I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, we'll get the job done.
All right, and yeah, and just, just off of that, I'm asking because like I said, I watched it. I heard it being brought up. And then there was a statement that was made. And just based off of that statement, I would like to say, I enjoy working on this and being on this commission with y'all. I think we have a good variety of people here, different walks of life, different career paths. I think we all have a genuine concern for Bastrop. And like, it's just an honor to serve with y'all. And I think we, we do the best that we can with what we have. And I think we do a great job of trying to lead the city into a better place. So I thought I'd put that out there, just.
Couldn't agree with you more. Couldn't agree with you more. You have to say, you've got to say something.
I do have a request. And just to back it up, you know, we had that, we, I guess, maybe are not understanding the direction, I feel like sometimes with our B three codes. But I'd like to get on the same page with city council. We got unanimously shut down on something that we kind of really considered, researched and looked at and felt like it met what we're trying to do in the B three code. And we understand development's coming. And we're looking to partner with developers that are trying to work with us on a B three code. And so I thought we had a really, that was my main reason for backing that project. And, and, and the fact that it would bring a diversity of housing type. I feel a much needed housing type, multifamily. And we were completely off on that, at least I am. And I, I attended a number of things and I feel like I want to be in step. If I'm, if I'm misunderstanding everything that we talked about, and I've been here since the beginning of B three, before it, before it got started. So I heard everything, I understood it. And I thought, I think I understand what the, the vision and the goal is and what the DNA of Bastrop is. And, and I want to see those things sustainably. You know, it's gotta meet all those three criteria. So I'm requesting then that we have a workshop with city council.
I would like to, I am on the same page with you, but before you, I think we need to have first a workshop with just us. Because we do have.
Make a workshop just for us.
You're striking the thunder.
Sorry.
No, I think we need to have a workshop with just, with just P and Z. Because we have several new members that were not here. They were not here for the moratorium. They don't know why B three came about. We used to have use zoning. Now we have form-based zoning. Why? And I think we need a workshop just for us. And we can, you know, and I would like it publicized. I'm not sure if we have it in conjunction with the regular meeting or a special, a special meeting. We would invite the city council to sit out there or B D C to sit out there, Z B A to sit out there. But I want to make sure we understand, everybody understands. And we're gonna have, come May, we're gonna have three pretty new council members. One was here, some weren't here. And I think it's important that we put it all out there so that we are on the same page. And the city council can decide, if that's not what they want, then let them change it. Because, you know, we've made some hard votes. It was not easy to look at, at out there at all those full seats and, and make a lot of people unhappy.
I want to add to that. I got a phone call from someone I know is working through the process. I'm not gonna name names, but got a phone call saying that they don't understand, I guess he's referring to staff, how development happens. And I thought, well, I think we understand what we want. And I'd like to kind of be on the same page because we want to, we all want the best for Bastrop. I live here, I could walk home from here. So we want a walkable, a community that's gonna be growing and that's reflective of the history of Bastrop or respects it. It's obviously gonna grow. You can't replicate historical district everywhere, but we can have those character pieces that we talk about. And so I don't want to have to be getting calls in the background. I don't know if y'all get phone calls, but I get people calling me and asking me.
And I think some people don't understand that there were zoning requirements, there were code requirements before B three ever came about. I mean, there's certain requirements for, for drainages, there's certain requirements for your electrical. Not everything, not every permit is because of B three codes. Because I've gotten a lot of calls from people that they go, B three code? Well, no, that doesn't have anything to do with B three.
Right.
So if we can have, we, we can get on the same page. Maybe we can educate some of those that make decisions.
But I also think that we, we've been working with the B three codes at this point for a while. And we can see where the, it needs to be tweaked at this point. And, and I think that that's why this workshop would be great. Because I feel like every meeting now, we're coming, someone's coming before us because their development doesn't fit neatly into our B three codes. So there's obvious, obviously some places where it can be tweaked. And I think it's gonna take a deep dive into that. I would also be interested in finding out how we can address any issues or concerns that our communities or residents in our communities are having with getting applications processed, using my gov, permitting, just something is, I was talking to someone and they've been trying to get a carport for two years. And they feel like they're just in this cycle of permits and documents and fees. How can we manage that? How can we manage the issues and concerns that even just our residents are having with the permitting process for just work on their homes?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
I was told somebody was trying to get a permit for two years to do something. Two years. They kept changing what they wanted. They did not ask for a permit. They were doing work at one time without a permit and had to get shut down. So I think a lot of times, our planning department gets a black eye because they're doing their job. You can't walk in one day and walk out the same day with a permit for a development. This ain't gonna happen. Because now we have drainage requirements, we've got environmental requirements, we've got a lot of different things that we didn't have ten years ago. Because we want our city to look the way we want it to look. We want our, our citizens to be safe. We don't want downstream or across the street flooding. And we've, the staff has made it easier. If they, people will just follow the bouncing ball. Go online and look. You know, it's not like it used to be, but it's not as hard as some people make it out to be. And that's what I sound a lot of the time.
Well, we, I think, and that's a good point. I do think though, that there are some valid points.
There are, absolutely.
And those are, we want to look at those valid points and be able to evaluate them to see how, again, we can make that process easier. If there are ways in that process that we could improve them, I think that we should be looking at each one of them.
I agree. And we can look at, in the workshop, we can also look at the process. You know, what is required?
And some, but some of those things that you're talking about are building code processes and not planning processes. So what this board does look at is planning processes. So that's our, everything in the B three codes specifically. And like, that one of the things you kind of say is, we have a lot of other codes. And those go through different amendment processes. So one of the ones that I think is a little bit more spotlight's been shined on recently is our floodplain regulations. And that, that's something that if we do not follow them, it can jeopardize flood insurance. That people will not be able to get flood insurance in town if we don't follow the floodplain regulations as adopted. And, and that's one of those things that I don't know with everything, you know. I think a greater emphasis has been put on that in the last five years that people didn't realize. And so, you know, we're making sure people are following those regulations better than possibly were done in the past. And so I think those are something, so it might be seen as a B three code issue, but it's really a floodplain issue. Because there's a lot of floodplain in town, unfortunately, and that, and, and the maps are changing currently. So you've got a lot of different, different pieces in play, so.
And then also, you've now, you haven't had, you hadn't been fully staffed. And you now have code, code enforcement.
Yes.
That we didn't have in the past. So things didn't get caught. And now we're trying to do things right. So I think we, I think we go from, we do code one oh one for us and anybody that wants to come and sit and listen or maybe even submit questions. I want to get on the same page. And if the city council doesn't want what they voted for, it's been a whole lot of time, a whole lot of money to develop, then once we understand everything, we'll give it back to them and say, this is what you want. But I want us to be on the same page and understand.
And I, I think it'll get the citizens to kind of trust, trust us a little bit more.
I hope so.
I know there's times where it seems like there's distrust because there's some differences between us and the council. It doesn't seem like we're on the same page at times, so.
But you know, one, one of my favorite sayings that I, somebody who's a lot smarter than I am said, the decisions are made by those that show up. And if you're sitting at home watching TV, yelling at the screen, ain't the same as coming here and asking questions. It's not the same as getting information. And a lot of times, people get upset because they're just wrong. They don't understand, they don't have the information. So I'd like the opportunity for us to provide planning one oh one and zoning one oh one, to get the correct information out there. And if we need to make adjustments, everything's not working like it should, then we do that. Y'all on board?
Yeah.
I agree.
Cool.
So, after tomorrow, we're gonna have it ready?
Yeah. First thing Monday morning.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on what we want to see and, I mean, explain what pedestrian shit is. You know, I'm still not sure I understand all of that. But there's, you know, there's terminology that we use and, you know, the ABCs that people don't understand. I just want to go down to the basics so people can understand. So work on it and I'll get with you and Pablo, anybody who wants to have some input? And then we do it as quickly as we can do it efficiently. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm off my, my soapbox now.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yay, thank you.